Good evening, everybody. It is January 10th. This is the Ashland Meeting of the School Committee. Our vision statement, which we open every meeting with, is the Ashland Public Schools is a forward-thinking district that cultivates the academic and social-emotional growth of each student through a supportive, collaborative, innovative, and challenging environment. Students will develop into self-motivated, resilient lifelong learners who embrace their role as responsible contributors to a global community. This meeting is being recorded by WACA Cable TV. Our order of business this evening is our open session call to order, opening procedures, agenda review, and adoption. There'll be time for public comment. Our administrative items include appoint a new school committee secretary, the grant approvals FY24 Fund Code 274, Individuals with Disabilities Education Act Part B, IDEA, FY24 Fund Code 240-262, IDEA Consolidated Federal ENT Application, new position special educator to work with aged 18 to 22 young adults, Pittaway School Improvement Plan, Warren School Improvement Plan, the vacant school committee member process, superintendent's update, warrant approvals, the consent actions includes the minutes, gifts and donations, committee reports of activities, member updates, action items, and then we will adjourn.
Are we not doing the tuition rate? Or did I just miss you saying that?
I think I missed one. Thanks, Paul. The FY25 Preschool Tuition Rate Increase Recommendation is number four on the list. So are you guys okay with the order of business this evening? And I'll also take roll call.
Yes.
Tina?
Yes.
And Mark Terry is absent this evening. And we had a resignation of one member, which is why we have an open seat. We have enough of us here tonight, three of us, to have a quorum. So we will move forward with the meeting. And we will start by asking if there are any members of the public that would like to offer any comment this evening. And then seeing none, we will move to our next item on the agenda, the grant approvals. The school committee secretary. Oh, gosh. That's very important. Is there anybody at this table that would like to be school committee secretary?
I'd be willing to at least.
I'd be happy to do it. I'm happy to step back into that role.
Okay, I would appoint, I would make a motion to appoint Tina as secretary.
And I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Secretary.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. Grant approvals.
And thank you.
Thank you, Tina. Much appreciated.
So where to start, I guess? Learning how to write grants this year was really, really helpful and informative. The 274 is a unique grant this year that was specific to funding allocated for the new IEP development and the rollout for school districts. Obviously, it's a big lift. And I think obviously the state decided that there would be some money that should be allocated with that. So I was able to write the grant and get awarded $26,648 to be used towards that new rollout. So in my proposal, I broke down the need for support from an individual to come and work with the district. Alan Bloom has been identified as that individual. He's a special ed, kind of everything. He's worked in a lot of capacities over the last 40 years. He has committed himself to Ashland for some time for next school year. And with his IEP work and goal writing, he's created a new or an application that helps teachers and special education professionals write really concise and meaningful goals specific to obviously student needs, which we do anyways, but there's always room for growth and improvement. He's also written a manual. And in the grant, I've written an ask for about 60 manuals to be distributed around the building and to our Ash PAC, to our special education coordinators, to our superintendent, to make sure that we're all on the same page with that. So that was approved, and that's how I plan to use that funding. Hopefully, if you say yes.
Thank you. Thank you for that. The grant writing process can be a lot.
So Jim, she's already awarded the grant, and this is our acceptance of the funds?
Yeah. And is it FYI, or do we need to actually vote?
No, we actually need to accept all grants.
Okay.
So we can expend the money.
Okay.
Yep. So we can do one at a time.
Sure.
If you want.
Do we have a motion to accept the grant as described?
So moved.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's how it's going to go tonight.
Easy note taking for Gretchen.
Both the 240 and the 262 have been grants in existence for, I don't know how long, but certainly for as long as, you know, the last at least 20 years. And those fundings were, they're pretty much together about $800,000 worth of funds that support a clerical salary, one being the administrative assistant that works in our office, a Coda, which is an occupational therapy assistant, seven ESPs. There's money in there for contracted services, supplies and materials, other expenses to support any special education needs that come up unexpectedly. About, really, the bulk of it is all professional salaries that have been used or allocated to this grant. And just kind of really looking at those salaries long-term. And that'll be a conversation at some other point. Is there a better way that we could be using our grants? Do these professional salaries need to be absorbed in other positions? But right now, it's working with what we have.
And Jim, the, at least this grant, this was already put, you know, considered. We already knew about this, and it was part of our budget. There's not a change.
Yeah, we didn't have the funding amount over the summer typically when we approved the grants, like Title I, Title III. We just didn't have the number.
Okay.
It's been part of the budget process for FY23.
Right. And I assume we were pretty close with our budgeting.
It doesn't change very much. It was like $20,000 more this year compared to last year.
Yep.
What is the amount, Brittany?
The 240 is $742,317. The 262 is $12,711.
And those are federal grants?
Yes.
Well, I move to approve the 240 and 262 grants as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Totally got it backwards that time.
You're going to mess the question.
I wasn't going to say anything.
I jumped the gun.
Yep. Thank you.
So we're going to keep Brittany up here.
Yes, let's do that.
And while it says new position, looking to add a new position, what I've asked Brittany to do tonight is to describe, as we're going through our budget process, it's important to get out there that we're looking at potentially creating another in-district program for our students. And while we're not quite ready to determine what that position looks like, partly because we are going through the negotiation process right now with the bargaining units, that I wanted Brittany to still be here to, you know, give an overview of what we're looking to do as we move forward within our budgeting before we meet as a committee with the budget workshop. So it's sort of just an overview of what we're looking to do. I fully support it. Mike fully supports it. Chris does as well. We've been, you know, we had a nice long meeting today to really hash out some details that we wanted to ensure that we have answers to the questions that we have before we present it to the board. So.
So just to give an overview, students with disabilities can potentially receive support from a school district up until 22. A lot of our students in district that have needed the support of a team to make that determination have had to be sent out of district just because we didn't have our own internal program. In the last year and a half, what I've seen in those placements largely that are not necessarily close to Ashland is programming that is tailored to the community in which the program exists, although the students remain Ashland residents. So if a student is working a part-time job, it might potentially be in NADIC. And when they turn 22 and transition out, they're now back in Ashland. And how logistically do they get from Ashland to NADIC? In my previous district, I worked through some of the things that Jim has spoken to. And obviously, specific to Ashland, there are other considerations that we need to work through. So I'm fortunate to have that experience in how to create a program from start to not necessarily finish because it's still in-existent in my previous district, but start to success, right? And maintain a successful program. And as many say, if you build it, they will come, thinking about those factors and how we work with families and the community to make sure we're giving our students what they need without building too much into a program too quickly. Christine Caveney is here, if it's okay, if she comes up and stands with me.
Of course.
And I'll have Christine introduce herself.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Christine Caveney. I'm one of the co-chairs of Ash PAC. And I appreciate Brittany inviting me here tonight. We fully support the idea of an 18 to 22 program. We think it's important to keep our students in their own community. And I appreciate that all of you, your support too for our special education students, so.
Thanks, Christine. So in thinking about what we could do better, more differently, this is one of those programs that we've had conversations with. You know, Christine's been a part of a lot of the conversations to make sure that there was community buy-in and an understanding of what it would look like for our students. I've been meeting with a handful of parents identified as people that I think would be valuable voices at a team to make sure that we're developing programming for our students with integrity and a planful lens instead of just saying, we need this, and this is what it looks like. Knowing, you know, full well that this has to be accepted and approved in a budget process. But regardless of this year or in the future, it will be something that I continue to ask for just because of the value it can bring to a community in the program. We had reached out to some local businesses in advance. And there is a significant amount of support that is already in existence, you know, here in Ashland. It's a little unique because students are 18 through 22 versus that traditional, you know, up to 18, maybe 19. And what that looks like can be very different than what is standard in existence. We're focusing on jobs and transition, independent living budget, and successful access to communities. As I'm sure many of you are aware, programming in adult agencies after 22 looks very different. So I feel very committed to making sure that we give our students the best chance at independent access to their communities prior to that point because I can't control what happens after 22.
So just a quick question. Curious as to whether any of this was happening in your previous district as well. I know from the town side, they have personnel and services and things like that. Particularly as in an older age like this, will there be any kind of coordination to, you know, both support them during the same time period, but then they'll be transitioning and potentially moving to services that are provided by the town staff as well?
Yeah. So in kind of anticipation of a seamless transition with this program, I've already reached out to Mass Rehab Commission, P-Paw, which is a parent advocacy league that has a built-in transition program, not program necessarily, but a curriculum that they use that they can work with families to support those next steps. Speaking with the Social Security Office, could they come in and do a training to teach our families how to budget appropriately? They're all on board. Mass Down Syndrome, they're all, you know, outlier kind of existing agencies that can't really give us necessarily direct, like, once a week, we're going to be here and help you, but they're going to come and speak to our families and our learners at the same time about how we can support them collaboratively as they transition into that 22 year.
Other questions?
No, I'm fully, you know, we've had the opportunity to speak about this at Ash PAC. I think it's a wonderful idea. I'm very curious to see how it works out when we have the budget discussion. I think it's a very worthwhile thing to pursue, and I'm hoping we're able to make it happen.
Yep.
Yeah, I can't speak highly enough of the work that Brittany's been doing on this program, but all our programs in general, right? It's sort of, I think we counted, we have 15 individualized programs, I think, currently. Since I've become superintendent, we've really focused heavily on keeping our students in Ashland, right? We value that. We believe in that. And this is just one more step that, for those 18 to 22. So we're looking forward to having something more concrete by the time we get the final budget together.
Excellent. Thanks, Brittany.
Thanks, Brittany.
You're welcome.
Happy New Year.
Thank you, Christine.
Take that long ride home. Get out of here. Okay. Well, you're the best.
Sarah.
Sure, Sarah.
You're up. Your turn.
Whatever you want, Sarah.
You're going to be my assistant?
Sure.
Okay.
Whatever you want.
The tuition rates first.
Oh, Chris is doing that.
Chris, are you doing that?
Chris is the money guy.
Sorry.
I'm just kidding. I don't see that. Go ahead, Chris.
Must be an increase. He wants nothing to do.
I let him do all that.
Right. But it's a decrease, and it'll be.
It looks like fiscal '23, though. But I can talk about '24.
Is this the form that was given to me? Okay.
I don't know. I got 24 here, so I can speak to it.
Yeah, I noticed that too when I was looking at it this morning.
The packet, I thought, the email that I have from Gretchen, that PDF, should have fiscal '24. The list on it. Fiscal '25, I apologize.
Go ahead.
So page eight, though, for reference, if anybody's looking for it on their computers. So similar to last year, we're back again this year looking for a rate increase for the pre-K program. Essentially, it's two and a half percent. And the intention of that is to offset incremental expenses, you know, inflationary expenses primarily and, you know, the salary dollars to kind of keep the program running at the same capacity it's been running at. Very good capacity. Add to what you want me to use. So that's why we're here, and that's why this is here, so they can plan their fiscal '25 rates.
Jim, were you able to find the Excel? It's just the third tab there, but.
There's another tab down there?
There's three.
I did the same thing. I'm not a spreadsheet person, so I missed the other tab.
Yeah.
I've got it.
Does anybody have any questions about that?
No, I mean, this seems in line with the amounts that it has previously increased.
And every year, our job-alike, we poll other area preschools and their cost of their tuition, too. It's pretty equitable with the increase of a 2.3 to 2.5 every year. And we still remain kind of in that high average when we compare to about, I think, the last response. I got 42 responses out of areas. And we fall in that higher average range for tuition costs, but we also have a lot of full-day programming, trying to meet the needs of the community, too. And that's at a cost, too, to be able to keep the kids longer.
And is that a comparison to private and public programs, or just other public programs?
I've just looked at other public, yeah, just to see how they're managing a budget with that integrated, inclusive model. Because it's a lot of special education salaries.
Benchmarking is not easy either, right?
No, it's not.
Yeah, it's not.
No two preschool programs are the same.
There's so many variables.
And unfortunately, it's not mandated yet for universal pre-K. So there's not a lot of guidance that's hard and fast with the Department of Education. It's using our best guidance for three- and four-year-olds and supporting that special education entitlement. So we're just trying to offset that with some community peers because we know it's right to be, you know, in an inclusive, integrated model and also try to offset our high budget costs for all of our personnel.
So Sarah, I apologize if you did say it. This, the spreadsheet shows our current rates and our next year's rates, but carrying the same enrollment. So, and I know that fluctuates based on our capacity and the number of students we have in the program that are getting services, right?
Yeah.
So do you expect it to be the same enrollment?
Yeah, so that's a great question. And if you talk to Mrs. Lowell, who might be watching from home, she is in the middle of preschool registration for 2025, which is crazy for me to think about September already. But this is when all of our area preschools are doing their enrollment, and we want families to be able to choose the right program for their kiddo. Based on our special education placements and what our PTO and our site council have been talking about, there is that need for full daycare. But that does limit how many positions I have in the space at Pittaway. So we did make a slight change to what our sessions are. We're keeping the same number of classrooms. But we're running two half-day sessions, the morning for the three-year-olds. The afternoon, we're making multi-age because we also have, with a changing demographic, families that are looking for afternoon slots as well. So we want to make that a multi-age opportunity. Then we're doing two multi-age full-day rooms, and then our two straight-grade four-year-old year before kindergarten. So the same number of classrooms for the integrated model, and we'll continue with the two specialized program classrooms to support our higher-need students.
Okay. So it sounds like the change is based on the peers in wanting to adjust that.
Right, like programming needs.
But other students that are coming in for services, sounds like that's going to be relatively constant. The changes aren't driven from that side.
Yeah, and I think we've talked about it before. Preschool is a world so different than that traditional K through 12. We're dealing with early intervention referrals, doctor referrals, and we are entitled to provide those services if a child qualifies for special education as soon as they turn three.
Yeah. And I know you're routinely getting, oh, somebody just turned 2.9.
I got five this week. Yep. Yep, lots of referrals this week, so.
So you're not anticipating a significant change from that?
Yeah, no, it still would keep us at about 120 if we're full. I obviously will not fill that this January, thinking about September because there are so many variables that happen over the summer and throughout the year. But it allows for about 64 community peers paying tuition and up to 56 special education slots of any varying need. Because if you qualify for an IEP, regardless if it's just for articulation or if it's for more specialized programming, that still is an IEP when we record that to DESI. So we have to keep all of our rooms integrated for that ratio.
Yeah. Great, thanks.
Does anyone have a motion to approve the tuition change?
So moved.
Thank you.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mrs. Lowell will be busy the next couple of weeks with our registration, for sure. So moving on to our school improvement plan. I think you've seen everyone's but the Warren School in ours, so you're pretty familiar with the format. As we're did a great job making this format for us, so hopefully it looks familiar, and you'll be able to navigate it pretty well. We have worked really hard since I've been in the position with Jim in really trying to align with the elementary schools. So you'll see a lot of the initiatives, especially around equity and curriculum planning and professional development, to really align with providing support in our curriculum, Hegarty foundations to get our learners ready for those more traditional grades and to be able to work collaboratively as we move children through the age groups, looking at them vertically as they grow and have that exposure here at the preschool level. We have a very small but mighty site council. Ronnie Pye is one of our representatives, as well as our wonderful nurse Karen, who is a jack-of-all-trades. She does a little bit of everything, really took this lead. We workshopped it out to staff, our preschool PTO, and really tried to get consensus of, we have a lot of things we'd like to do, but where do we want to really prioritize utilizing the new strategic plan, those four buckets, as Jim refers to? So under equity, we really want to kind of take the model that the Warren and Minda School is doing and utilizing some data teams. Data at the preschool level is very hard. A lot of it is work samples, right? You have to draw a person, and you need so many, you know, identifying components or added things. So we're looking at how can we look at inter-rater reliability? How can we talk the same language about classrooms? And how can we make sure we're scoring kids on our standard-based report cards to really be able to show where they're at and where we can see them grow and progress? So we're going to kind of utilize their model and obviously modify it for our tools. We still are leaning into the Teaching Strategies Gold, the TSG assessment that Mrs. White had established probably almost 10 years ago, making sure we're keeping up with inter-rater reliability. That looks at all of our early learning, early cognitive skills, as well as social-emotional development. Teachers have always looked at that independently, to write their student support plans or to look at their class. But we've never really looked at analyzing the data across the whole program. So what do all three-year-olds look like? What do all four-year-olds look like? Is there a teacher that has a strength? Could they workshop off how they're teaching this specific skill? And that's been even more apparent since the pandemic, especially around that social-emotional learning, that kids need more explicit instruction because they didn't have those early learning experiences, going to the library, going to the playgroup, even going to the grocery store. So we want to make sure that that's embedded in our learning. So also, our professional staff is pretty small but mighty. We have about 11 professional staff of service providers and special education staff. And they have developed a committee to really identify what are the areas that we want to target for data teams. We're going to have one in February, have another one in May, and then really kind of work on them quarterly next year to kind of move forward with those. Along those lines, our curriculum leader, Jeannie, this year, she's been instrumental in helping plan those and analyzing the data as it's come in and being creative with looking at, some of the data is really streamlining just how we analyze work samples or when do we take data so we can look at everyone's development on draw a person or everyone's letter ID at a certain week, you know, within a certain month, so we can see how they grow and progress over time. So those are pretty much the highlights there. The resources needed is intentional time, you know? We utilize our curriculum meeting. This year, I've also established a rotating schedule of common planning time where the half-day teachers can meet together on Fridays, and the full-day teachers can meet, you know, on the alternating Fridays. And they're planning small group instruction. So they're focused on an area where all classrooms are getting the same instruction, working together and identifying how they would do it and differentiate it based on the kids in their class. The next one is our social-emotional learning. You've heard a lot from probably Jenna already. You'll hear from Pete, too, and also Jen Cutler. We have a lot of SEL initiatives going on in the district. Preschool is really the foundation for all of them. We continue to have a lot of kids having their very first experience outside of the home with us. And I like to call it curb-to-curb. We're supporting them literally how they say goodbye to mom and dad, whether that's good, bad, or sometimes really challenging, how to support greeting peers, working, you know, from the ground up so that they can be successful parts of their classroom and community and enjoy school. So we utilize our PBIS. It's Be Kind and Be Safe, our little bumblebees that you see around. Last week, we had a PBIS reboot, so we were all dressed in yellow and black all day. We have a great SEL team that supports that. We also are part of the Zones of Regulation, which is a pre-K through 5 initiative that Jen Cutler has supported us in. Obviously, we have to modify a lot of those lessons because three- and four-year-olds don't even know what feelings are yet. So really shaping what they're feeling and putting words and vocabulary to that before they can begin to take perspective for someone else. So that's embedded within there. So over the last two years, our staff has also been researching a new social-emotional curriculum, which Jen Cutler was able to purchase for us with grant funding last year called PATHS. And that's great. It utilizes puppets for a lot of the self-regulation and emotional. It's very preschool-based. We piloted a bunch of different ones, borrowing curriculum from different preschools, and we settled on that. So we're in full implementation stage with that this year. Responsive Classroom is another initiative we like to lean into that K through 5 is doing and working with Mike to continue to slowly train all of our staff so that they can utilize that. So that's all familiar programming once they get up to kindergarten. And our needs to kind of meet those kind of initiatives is really the responsive classroom training money that, you know, Mike and I are already in communication of, and then working with our SEL team and Jen to really support some coaching and being able to get in and give some positive feedback to teachers who are teaching all content areas every moment of the day with preschoolers and really like learning how to embed that as part of their language every day about being kind and being safe and being able to support how they're feeling. The third is resource management. We all know Pittaway is now officially the oldest building in town. Definitely school building, but maybe town. I don't know. I'll roll into it.
You win the prize.
You know, we see Mr. Pittaway's ghost or hear him quite often.
Oh, my goodness.
Pat had warned me about that, and so we joke about that. But obviously, facilities and, you know, Chris working with us on kind of the ongoing maintenance of the building, that is, you know, definitely something that we need to stay on in focusing on safety and really making our space, now that we're going to live here probably for most of our educational careers, making it inclusive, you know, making sure that we're updating the accessibility, you know, the new pavement, the new stairs, the ramps, the playground, you know, as well as just overall building maintenance. So what our staff really wants to focus on is making that playground more accessible because that's also town use outside of school hours. So bless you. We have a lot of parents willing to help out. We have a lot of really great ideas from staff. The preschool PTO, which is separate from the K through 12 PTO, they've acquired a lot of funding through the BAA grant process. And that's all been allocated for making our outdoor education, or I should say indoor, too, because it's inclement weather, recess, more accessible and more equipment to provide for everyone. So we'd like to do a playground audit. We have a committee going on that, too, reaching out to try to find a good price, to be able to ask for money. And, you know, looking at maybe doing a long-term, multi-year plan for a campaign to make it fully accessible and inclusive. In the meantime, we've got some nice grant money that we can be mindful of, you know, what could we implement now to make the short term better, but also, you know, we can use once we get a full playground remodel. There's a couple districts that have recently done that. So the committee is also reaching out to them to see, how did they start a campaign? Could they find any businesses and corporations to help match donations, things like that? So they're really excited about that. I think that has, it's a great space. Like, we have a full field, a track, the playground equipment, but there's a playground structure there that was put in when kindergarten went over there, which was maybe, how long, 12? Was it before you, Jim?
The kindergarten moved back to Warren almost twelve, twelve years ago when my senior wasn't.
Yeah, so. So they put that green and blue structure in there, but our preschoolers can't use that during the school day because it's not a regulation. And we'd like to remove it and reallocate it someplace else in town that could use it. But that takes money to be able to take it down and make sure that it's certified and able to be used in that capacity. So finding some short money for that, maybe to get that moved and, you know, a better use somewhere else in town would be helpful. And it would free up some space for us. I think all the other facility stuff, Chris is on.
We'll talk about when we have the strategic plan presentation.
And then the last curriculum planning, that aligns a lot, like I've said, with Warren and Mindes. We're really trying to provide an early childhood experience that is fun and play-based. But we're also trying to set them up to be successful learners when they move to the Warren School. We are a small, I talked about maybe a hundred to a hundred and twenty kids. It's a very intimate setting. We can do a lot of really great teaching within that to get them ready. So we've implemented, you know, the Hegarty, the foundations that you've heard about, all the SEL curriculums. We really just want to make sure that we're aligning and we're having more intentional time. You know, administration comes down and occasionally we get some teachers coming down. But when we had our boiler issues and we were closed for a day, we were able to send our ESPs up to Warren. And just to give them that perspective of what the expectations are. Some of them hadn't been in there since their kids were in there. You know, I'd love to be able to find a way for teachers to go up and do that and observe some teaching, just to better align us vertically. And then professional development is the other committee our staff has chosen to really find preschool-specific. That's a really hard thing. There's not a lot of people in the pre-K world. And our preschool PTO has also recently allocated some funding for us, I haven't even told you that, to help out, so I won't be asking for as much. But to really identify some people during our professional development days to look at how can we incorporate good teaching and learning with the preschool standards specifically. While still, you know, trying to support whatever the district's initiatives are. And that's where we're at right now. Lots to do.
Questions for Sarah?
It always amazes me all of the stuff that happens.
I know, there's a lot going on. Yeah, there's a lot going on. But it's like an awesome time to capture and have kids. Our families are fabulous. The kids are sponges. It makes it much easier to go to work every day, you know, when you're greeted, even when it's pouring rain this morning, you know? And the snow has disappeared. There were some tears that the snow had gone. But hopefully that will come back.
So Sarah, relative to the, to the playground, did you say you already put together a team to look at?
I'm ready for you to join us.
That wasn't a volunteer.
This has been built.
Yeah, no, we are.
So you say.
Yeah, we're trying to look at a model of a public school district that maybe started it from start to finish. Bellingham just put one in and for our beginning research and outreach, it was around three hundred thousand. I don't know, you know, the cost of all of it, how much they matched, but it was a multi-year campaign and fundraising. So I'd like to think about something long-term wise if the money is that big.
I mean, I think there's two reasons why I asked is, one, if you start getting different funding sources, sometimes there's conditions and different things that you need to be aware of, right? And so you can use them, but if you're not sure what the end state is.
Or how long it's going to take.
Some of them are like, hey, if you don't, if, you know, it's not twenty years or however long a usable life is, there's all sorts of.
Yeah.
Depending on the funding, on the funding source, right? And so you do it strategically like that. And just if it would be helpful, I can ask the team to get me the, some of the data on the pricing for stuff that we did, you know, like the place surface. You want to be accessible, assuming that's what you're, you know, that's one of the components you can't have, you know, the current place surface is not accessible.
And the cost of mulch every year is, you know, a lot. So thinking about something that's going to last and be more sustainable is definitely something. I think the committee, my hopes are, is that they'll help us when keeping us forward moving, right? Because I've got a lot of balls in the air in making sure that we're thinking about if we are taking funding, how can we make this, you know, place it in action immediately? So that people see that how their money's being spent. It's not five years down the road. Here's a playground where maybe those teachers aren't there anymore, those families aren't there. So just having a thoughtful plan of could we do pieces of it at a time? Maybe just do the surface for a year.
And the other component is if they're like, wait, hold on a second, now you've figured out a strategy and they don't, you got this funding from source A. And now that's not going to be permanent, right? And so being thoughtful of that, obviously you will be, but.
If you want to help out, we'll gladly take your guidance.
Talk to me in a few months.
Okay, I'll give you a few months.
It's been a little busy.
Yeah, and should have a well-deserved break after Mindes.
Any, any further questions, concerns? We don't have to vote on this. It's just an FYI. But thank you for all the great work. Thank you for the folks on the site council. Thanks for your staff at the school.
Great, thank you.
Appreciate you. Thank you, Sarah. Hi, Pete.
Thank you.
Twist my arm.
You're looking at Brittany, so we know where this is going.
No, that was to encourage her to go home.
Yeah.
First, just.
Good night, thank you.
Thanks, Brett.
To acknowledge and just thank our council members from last year. Tiffany Farrell, Ben Crete, Rosalia Morrell, Kristen Quern, Kerry Coburn, Donna Shaw, Daria Tucker. Kate Altman also served as a non-voting member of the council. Just their work is instrumental in helping us to collaborate with the entire school, our parent community, and determine where our goals were for this year.
Pete, one second. If you have a copy of it, can you send it to us? We don't, we don't have access to it in the folder either, so.
Okay. Okay. One of the parts that really worked well for us in, you know, is now my twentieth year of being a principal. I will say that this is the first year ever that I've felt just the cohesion of all the work that we're doing. That it's all coming back to our data team meetings. And that's driving our decisions of what teachers are doing on a daily basis in their classroom to the goals that we're setting as our whole school. And how everything just continues to come back to this process. We're very fortunate. Mike had written a grant to connect us to S3, the systemic student support team that is connected through DESI. And we were able to be the recipient of that grant this year. So what's great is you'll see through the plan is just how many structured meetings we have with this team and with other schools who are going through the same process. We have run into a few glitches as we've been identified as a year-one school. And from our last in-person meeting, the S3 team that visits us, there were three individuals that came from the team. They recognized that our school isn't quite a year-one school. We're almost like a one-point-five or one-point-seven because of how many things we've already had in place prior to this year. And they recognize that when we're doing some of our collaborative work with other communities, it may not be as meaningful for us because we are a bit ahead. So they're spending a little more time with us when they come to the school for their site visits. So much so that they're actually coming for our next round of data team meetings to observe and then meet with the teachers afterwards. And give more specific feedback for our teachers that are on this team. So as you'll see in the equity piece, the data teams is one of the big drivers of how we're bringing equity to all children. And it's with that idea to make sure that we're challenging all students. And equally important that we're having strong documentation of what was done so that each teacher isn't reinventing the wheel for a child each and every year. And the goal is that by the end of this year, through working with S3, that we'll have a strong document that identifies for the teacher what the goals were for the year. How the child progressed towards those goals, what successes were, and also what challenges were so that we're not repeating those same challenges. Another goal around our equity piece is to continue to be a champion school through Special Olympics with the unified piece. This was actually a goal that started with two teachers and their individual goals for their practices by Daria Tucker and Erica Zipsi. And they came to me and they said what they'd like to do of really investigating, could we receive that recognition of being a unified school? In meeting with the Special Olympic team, they came in and they were really excited by what we had already had in place. And we ended up qualifying immediately for that delegation. And as we moved forward, it was now saying, how do we create more opportunities for our students to play with one another? To have sports activities alongside of each other and where it's not something separate that's happening. And really to give some great credit on this as well, of someone who's not part of our site council, but has been instrumental, this is Tim Ryan, our PE teacher. Who has really embraced this and has made it part of his daily instruction each and every day with all of our students. As we continue, we look at our social emotional learning. And again, as I started tonight, I mentioned about that cohesion that I finally feel after such a long time of doing this work. Is Jen Cutler's role and her work in supporting our data teams as well. And now she's at a place where she's using the data points that we've had from DESA, coupled with our attendance data, our behavior data, our teachers anecdotal records. And we're creating individual plans that now take place to support our students. It's now where we're looking at our at-risk students and working with children and families at times of where appropriate to bring parents in. And work with them in outside resources as well about how this moves forward. Again, that matches up so well, and you heard Sarah speak about this, I'm sure that Jenna spoke about this as well, is the responsive classroom component. And that's every teacher and adult in our building using those pillars of just how we're looking at our students and treating them with respect. And building relationships for our children with each other and our adults in the school. So it's continuing that commitment to ensure that we're training all of our teachers with responsive classroom, which is an undertaking. And you'll see this is probably the first line where it lists as a price, because this is an outside training that takes place. Mike and I have had a lot of dialogue about this, where a past trainer that we used is absolutely outstanding. And it would be a little cheaper for her to do our trainings, but we do want to make sure that we're continuing with responsive classroom. And continuing that relationship with responsive classroom. Last year, we were actually able to have an audit from them as well. So it was great to get some feedback about how our implementation has been through these years and where we're continuing to go with this work. As well, as mentioned from the piece of a community service piece, and that all of our students will be having that community service project by the end of this school year. We have not identified that as the staff. We've started our conversations, our faculty meetings, but we have not finalized exactly what this will look like for all of our K one and two students. But it will be something that will be during the school day, so all children have that opportunity. And they understand that importance of just being part of a community and how they do give back to our school and what respect looks like in their responsibility of being part of the community. As we look at the resource management, the, the providing that safe environment. And this goes with some of the changes that we've already made with the new buzzer system that has been put at the Warren School. It's the drills that we're practicing on a regular basis. The safety committee that Mike leads at the district level with, with other emergency organizations in town where we can collaborate, plan our drills, talk about our potential liabilities. How to correct these liabilities. In addition to that, we have a voluntary Warren School Safety Committee meeting where we meet and we talk about the pieces specifically at Warren School. What has been great is working with the Ashland Police Department and specifically with the Ashland Fire Department. And Deputy Chief Morgan has been the flexibility that they've given us. So during our drills, we've purposely created problems. So the first fire drill of the year, which happens within those first few days of school, we do a typical fire drill. Deputy Chief is excellent about doing it early in the morning, so before kids are transitioning. Because we have kindergartners where this, for many of them, it's their first time at a school, so we want this to happen from their classroom. Not when they're in our class or one of these other locations. After that first drill takes place, she works with me and her staff, and we actually begin blocking egresses. At our last fire drill, we blocked two egresses. And we do it during inopportune times, so it's during lunch and recess passages. And what's very exciting for me to see, and again, I've done this for a very long time, to see how our young students are responding so well. That when they come to a problem in the hallway, we set up carts with red bulletin board paper on it. And they see it, and there's no hesitation, they turn and they just go to the next exit. And it's become just something that's normal for our kids to react to, which is sad in one sense, but it's great that they are getting that preparation. And again, kudos to our teachers, staff, and support staff, because they're supporting the children to learn all these pathways and plans of how to be safe during emergencies. As well, and this is a large shout-out to our IT department led by Paul Carpenter, the technology infrastructure of what's happened in our school. Our Wi-Fi is working far better this year, which is a critical part, because it comes back to some of the pieces that I'll speak to in a few moments. But the IT department was able to roll out Chromebook carts for every single classroom this fall. Every child now, once again, has one-to-one computing in our school. And that's an important piece when we talk about the curriculum components that we're doing right now and some of the changes that we've made. Again, it comes to our data team meetings, which is guiding all of this. But at this point in time, I'm excited to share that since the fall, every kindergartner, first grader, and second grader has their own Chromebook. They do stay at school each day, and the teachers have a Chromebook cart that organizes this so that they're not trying to figure out how to manage charging every device every night. To make sure that they're ready to go for the children.
And Pete, those were some of the ones that came over from the Mindes.
Some of them are recycled machines from the other schools, but they are meeting our purpose. Exactly, yes, yeah. Paul, Paul and his staff was able to repurpose all of those carts to each room. As we look at the curriculum piece of this, and again, it stems back to our data team meetings and what's guiding this, is Sarah spoke about this earlier. The importance of small group instruction is that all of our classroom teachers are now doing small group instruction on a daily basis with our children. And this is really where we're seeing great growth for our students that are excelling with the curriculum, our students that are on pace with the curriculum. And then our students that need remediation, or in some cases, introduction to some skills. And it allows the teacher to now look at this, and every six weeks, because we have five of these meetings throughout the year where we look at every single child. They're coming back and we're creating goals, creating new groupings, and we're moving this. Important to note as well is when a teacher creates their groups, they don't have to wait six weeks to move a child. If a group is advancing at a faster rate than one child, that child may move down a group or move up a group as well if they're advancing at a faster rate. As this goes through, different data points have become critical for us. And this is where we're using the Amplify data. If you remember last year, Kate Altman spoke about the Amplify data, and this is where we're doing the mandated testing from the state for the dyslexia screeners. It's not just for that dyslexia screener though. It's giving us great reading information about how our students are performing and how they're growing during the year. And the nice part is because we've now been using it for more than one year, we can actually look at the child over more than a year's length of time to look at that growth of what's happening. In addition, we're now using iReady as well for mathematics, and we're able to do that same piece of looking at math skills with growth. And it will be able to support us for growth over time. But an exciting piece about the iReady is similar to the Amplify platform. It also allows teachers to create groupings based on specific skills. So based on the student performance on the assessments that they've done online, it will then tell the teacher, here are the next skills that the program is recommending that the teacher should work on next. That is what drives our data team meetings, of where we sit with our experts from those fields, whether it's Tarek Marquez in math, Kathy Farakia, Sue Nash, Sue Malusi in reading. Myself and the other administrators supporting that. But then we're looking at that data and we're talking about, all right, let's now look at the informal data from our day-to-day work that the students are performing at. And that's how we're creating the day-to-day lessons that happen for our children. That other big piece, and I spoke about this earlier in the year, is ST Math. And that was the necessity for the Chromebook initiative that we had to have. Is as a recipient from the grant for ST Math through the 1-8 Foundation, every child needs to be in ST Math every single day. As a reminder, ST Math, the beauty of this is that there's zero language. So with our large EL population and our many children that come to the Warren School that do not speak English, they're all able to access this problem, this program. And it's a challenging program. It's solving puzzles. And when I say puzzles, I'm not talking about the jigsaw puzzles, but it's mathematical problems that are going through geometry. It's going through addition. At the beginning kindergarten level, it's about one-to-one correspondence and recognizing that. One of the pieces that we've done based on a recommendation from another school who had been a few years into this, we do not send this home with children. And when we find that children are logging their minutes at home, we have some conversations with parents to keep it as a school activity. Because we've found from the other districts and we've now seen from our handful of students that have done this at home. At times, we have children who are moving so quick at home, they're getting support from a parent, they may not understand the concept. And this, by doing it at school, we can guarantee that the child still understands the concept. Starting at grade two and then moving up, because this is a program that Mindes has applied for the same grant. It actually gives quizzes, and where the quizzes do have language involved. So they're able to then check to say, how is the child maintaining these skills and doing these pieces as well? As I mentioned about the difficulty of these puzzles, and Mike not to put you on the spot, but as Mike and I went to a training for the first time last year, we were told to start with certain puzzles. Mike and I obviously figured we could move through this pretty easily. I think I went into like a seventh grade problem and quickly realized I have no idea what they're asking me here because there's no language, so I went down to a second grade level. Mike started with a fifth grade question.
Back to kindergarten.
I was more frustrated than anybody in the entire room. Yeah, it was just one of those things. And the kids, the kids are so resilient, which is incredible. Whereas adults, we're probably a lot less resilient.
Right, for sure. Exactly.
And to that resilience is what I've now been able to watch with our students and children that I know well. Our second graders who just started with this program, but knowing these children now for over two years before they started the program is. It does support resiliency, but that's not what the frustrations I think were from Mike and I know from myself. It was, it builds on its own knowledge of how the puzzles are moving forward. And there are pieces that are consistent, so it allows the children to tackle new information on a regular basis and keep being pushed in their mathematical thinking. It also allows us to differentiate. So we have children that are in one of our specialized programs and that grade-level work is not appropriate for them at this point in time. It allows us to. and that grade level work is not appropriate for them at this point in time, it allows us to change their place of where they are in the program. As well, if we have students who are moving very quickly and they are showing mastery of this, it allows us to move forward with them as well and continue to challenge them. That information is also used during our data team meetings, and our teachers use that of determining what's the next steps in ST Math, but also what are the next steps that they'll use during their small group instruction. So, coming back to, to my beginning of this, is again, for the first time in my 20 years as a principal, I finally feel like we have this one piece through our data team meetings that's bringing everything together and giving our teachers meaning, so that it doesn't feel like we're just chasing that windmill all the time of what's next.
Great news. Questions, comments?
No, I'm similar, you know, to, to my comment, um, about pitaway, it's always amazing to hear all of the stuff that you pack into every day.
Thank you.
Thank you for all that you do. And I love to see all the, the data teams and how that's continuing, and I can't wait to get, I'm sure at some point, you know, before the end of the year, we'll get an update about what the data looks like, and I, I'm, I'm really excited to, I'm sure you're excited to see it, because you see it all the time, right? I'm really excited to see how it's, it's pretty...
Thank you. And, and one of the pieces that's also nice is we were able to, uh, include Kate Altman in this S3 team, uh, that works at the data team, because she had done some of the work where we originally put her to this, that was before her transfer to Midnezz. Uh, and when we spoke to the S3 team, although they said this isn't something that other districts do, uh, they saw great value in keeping her, so that way there is the vertical articulation that will occur at some point through this.
Even better, right? That's fantastic, well, thank you to everyone on your site council, it looks like some of them came back, so, for this year.
People are having fun, which is good.
That's a good thing, uh, and, uh, thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, folks, um, next up, thank you, Jim.
Just a quick, just a quick question, yeah. With, with the departure of Erin, who was, did, was she a site council liaison to someplace that we should consider putting on?
That is a good question.
We want to wait until...
Midnezz?
No, I'm Midnezz.
Are you?
No, I'm in a school.
Okay, and Mark's high school.
Yeah, she might have, she might have been, she might have been Warren.
She is safety, I mean, well, yeah, so there are going to be some...
Well, um, we were doubled up on safety.
Oh, right, right, right. Yeah, Paul, yeah, so that we don't need to double up anymore. Anyhow, um, we're talking about, uh, the, the vacancy on school committee. And I just wanted to give you, uh, whoever's watching, because we, we have had some interest, which is wonderful, and we want to, uh, there are two things that we need to do, is one is follow the law, uh, the law dictates some of what we're doing here, and then the second piece of it is we need to create a process, so everybody knows what to expect moving forward. So the legal piece is, is that we had to post within a certain amount of time that the position was available, and we have to make a decision within a certain amount of time after that. So that has all been done, um, January 18th is the deadline for submissions, and January 24th is the evening that we will be making our decision after we have a public process of interviewing all the candidates. The decision is also a joint decision between the school committee and the select board, obviously it's our appointment, um, but the, the way that the town charter is written, um, the, the select board will, um, be partners with us in this selection. Again, for anybody who might be watching this meeting now or tuning in later to find out more about, um, what we do, um, on the school committee, first of all, I'm the chair, my name's Lori Toasty, this is my 13th year, um, Tina, I think it's, is it your third year?
This is my third.
And Paul, eight? Eight or nine?
Sounds right.
Yeah, and Mark is, um, a few years behind me, I think. Jim and I probably have been around the longest at this table, so I, my kids were students when Jim was high school principal. Um, and we've worked really hard, um, both Jim and I and everybody since, to create a culture of collaboration, um, not just with each other, but with our administrative team and with the other boards in town. And we have seen a lot of progress because of that, uh, and because of that, we're also, you know, looking for a, you know, somebody who has a collaborative spirit. For sure, that's important to all of us, because that's how we operate, there's no drama, we focus on the work, and we don't always agree, but we always listen to what everybody has to say with respect. The school committee position itself, again, by law, we only do three things, even though, uh, we sit here and we're talking about all kinds of different things on the agenda, everything we talk about fits into one of three buckets. Uh, the first one is we hire and evaluate the superintendent. As far as the hiring, that part's been done, I've been involved in that many times, and, and fortunately Jim's stuck around for a, a long time, so I haven't had to do that recently, but, uh, certainly the evaluation process happens every year, and that's how we set the goals for the superintendent, is how we set the, our, um, goals for the community, our educational community, and, um, we work with the superintendent all year long on those goals, and that's a process, and it's a public process. So you would be part of that if you're looking to do this job. Um, the second thing that we do is policy. We do have a policy subcommittee, but it's really the whole board that's involved in voting on any policy that comes through. Um, and that's kind of the overarching, um, or sort of...
Budget.
Well, bu- budget also, but I'm, what I'm saying about policy is, policy means the overarching sort of rules of the district. We don't deal with the day-to-day, uh, we don't hire our fire teachers, we don't supervise teachers, we don't, uh, hear about, you know, what the problems are in the buildings, we hire, uh, the superintendent, who then hires his administrative team. And so just so that everybody understands, because I know, I know, I knew nothing about what school committee really was responsible for before I joined this board. So we're more working at, uh, the policy level, and then we have administrators that make sure those policies get enforced. And then the third thing is budget. So, um, we are responsible for the budget of the whole district, um, there are lots of different levels to that. There's a certain amount of money that we get from the state, a certain amount of, amount of money that we get from the town, and then within our own system, there are, uh, priorities, um, that, uh, we have to prioritize where, uh, certain, pretty much finite sum of money is going to go. So we spend the whole year, Jim mostly with his administrative team, figures a lot of that out, and then we start, we hear about it along the way, and then at some point we join in on the conversation, and ultimately the vote on the budget is our responsibility. So the person, you know, needs to understand budget or be willing to learn and understand it, um, a great collaborator, understand policy, and, uh, participate in the evaluation of the superintendent. So that's the job. Uh, I can share with you in the community that so far we've received, eight people have put in a talent bank request to, uh, for the position, and the deadline is the 18th, so we may get more. Um, the, I've only been involved in this one other time, some people dropped out by time we got to the public hearing. So I don't know whoever is interested in this job, I don't know who, how many people are going to be here on the 24th, but whoever shows up that night will, and they fill out a talent bank, um, will be the people that we interview. And so now, we're gonna, I'm gonna open up a discussion, because we do need to talk about what that process might look at like, um, because we do have a number of people, we need to be mindful of the time. Um, I'm sure people who are interested in the position want to know what to expect as far as questions or whether they're going to need an opening statement, that sort of thing. And then, um, tomorrow, Jim and I are meeting with, um, the town manager and the chair of the select board to, um, get their input again, because they are 50% involved in this decision. So that's what I know so far, and then the rest of it, um, I'm gonna ask my colleagues to just chime in on, you know, what your ideas are about a process. I'm thinking opening statements at least, you know, for sure.
Yeah, I think to give everybody the opportunity to just share who they are, why they're interested, and want to be a, a, a part of the process. Uh, I think it, but I, I think it would be nice to have all of the candidates answer the same questions.
Yeah.
Um, to kind of get input on, kind of, I don't want to say foundational things, but so that they're all, they're all given the same opportunity to answer the same questions, um, what those questions are, I don't know what the process should be to come up with them, if we should discuss those now, if we should take some time to think about it and give feedback. Um, but I think it's fair to, and, and how many questions, I think we need to be mindful of how many people are here. Um, I don't think we want to ask 10 questions of each person, you know, I think we need to, to be thoughtful of, of their time, of how long the meeting will go, of our, you know, obviously there'll be deliberation, um, you know, after the fact as well too, so...
Right.
Um, I don't know what the magic number is, but I think, I think it would be fair to give everybody...
If you multiply it, like, let's say we're going forward with what we know right today, which is eight people, if you multiply that times, you know, even five questions, that's, might be too many.
That's a lot, right, so even...
So, I mean, I would ask people to come up with a few, I think, maybe, you know, any two or three of your most important questions, the ones that you feel are, will give you the most insight into, you know, the person that's applying for this position. Uh, the other thing I will say too, as, as far as process, because, uh, you know, the appointment ends on the 24th, but then in May, uh, the seat becomes open again for an election. So I, I think that the person that does apply for this job, um, I would hope that they would be prepared to commit to running in the election, I mean, obviously things happen, or you may decide you don't like it, but the truth is, uh, being on the school committee from February till May, maybe gives you the opportunity to intend, you know, five, seven meetings, maybe, maximum. And there's a learning curve, it takes a long time, so I think even though technically the commitment is, is to the end date is the election, but if there's not an intent to run in the election, then it, we've got to start over from square one, all of us.
The, the other thing I'd add to that is, given that, so the way that it works is you're appointed until the next election, and then, uh, you then run for the remainder of that particular seat's term. So given the, the cycle that this is on, you'd actually be in back-to-back elections, just, I want to make sure people know what they're signing up for.
Right.
Um, that if you were to continue, you'd be back-to-back. Personally, that's not a big deal, but I know it can be intimidating process for people.
Well, and also just the, the timeline for getting your name on the ballot, you can't decide in May that you want your name on the ballot, you have to make that decision. And I don't, I need, I'm actually, my, my seat is up in May, so, um, I'm gonna have to be pulling paper soon to get signatures. Um, and, and I want to say that the timeline is, is March.
Well, it starts soon, it starts in January and it ends in March.
The timeline to turn in signature in order to be on the ballot is in March, so it's a decision that needs to be made pretty quickly.
Right.
Probably as you're in the process of interviewing.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Exactly, and whether or not you would have an opponent is completely out of our control, unfortunately. I mean, I have, I have run for election five times, I've had an opponent twice. And so most of us, we get a lot more interest in the school committee position when there's an appointment versus having to run a campaign, and not all of us love doing that, um, but that might be a reality for the person that signs up. And it might not be, sometimes when you're already in the seat, and if people are paying attention and they understand the circumstances, then that might encourage others not to run against you, but we have, we can't guarantee one way or the other, but we do want everyone to be aware that that's a factor. So having said all that, if you're still interested, um, you know, I, I don't know if you want to try to hash out questions tonight, Mark's not here, so I think, you know, I... You know, I, I think, my, um, suggestion is, also we're on a timeline that is, because these deadlines are, uh, are in the town charter or the, the state law.
Stone, the town charter, yeah.
Uh, we, you know, we can't have additional meetings to figure this out. So, uh, which also goes for us in terms of forming questions, so I, I, I'm gonna propose, uh, if you trust me with this, is to send me, you know, your most important questions, and, because some of them may even overlap with each other. So if you send me anywhere from like three to six questions, and ha- let me put them on a list of everybody getting whatever number we decide tonight, maybe everyone gets three questions, um, and then the night of the meeting, I will present you with the three that you're going to ask. Hopefully they're the three that you came up with, but if you've overlapped with somebody else, you might be asking a different question.
So, um, each of us asking three questions, so fifteen?
Well, the number that, the number is, hasn't been decided yet, do you think, maybe two? I mean, once, two...
Or I'm even fine with the entirety of the committee asking three questions, like if we come up with, with the same three que- or whatever, whatever number, whatever magic number we, we land on.
Yeah.
And, and so, I, I intentionally wanted to make sure you, you spoke first, I, I did send something to Lori. I think what you said overlapped with what I sent her, you know...
Totally, yeah.
Pretty well, so, wha- what I had said, what might be a good idea is that, um, we give them ni- each ni- 90 seconds, you know, we take them in turn, not like 90, 90, 90, but, you know, when a candidate is getting interviewed, give them 90 seconds to introduce themselves, provide any information, uh, and then m- my thought is if, if, if we give it to you, that's a, you, you can be the arbiter of, hey, if I, if I give you three questions and order them in the priority I would like to ask, and, and in the ideal world, we only ask our, our number one question, but in the case where her and I is over, is the same question, then you just, you know, choose hers and bump mine to the second one or something like that.
Or maybe we do four though, Tina, since Mark, and then maybe then everyone feels like they, at least their top question will get asked.
And then I would ask the, my question that you said, hey, this is the one that, that, that worked, and then I ask that to everyone, you ask your question to everyone. And then so each of them, so they get four, and then certainly you can, you know, if I ask the question, you can ask a follow-up question, because it's based on their answer at the time, right?
We'll have to time the answers, if you've ever watched the debates in town, like we will have to time the answer, just because we really could be here for hours. And we're not going to be throwing trick questions at anybody, I mean, they're going to be questions related to the position, look, we're looking for people who are, you know, invested in this community, invested in education, are good collaborators, are willing to understand, you know, budget and policy, are good with managing people, that are people, you know, that might feel, you know, where we have, we all have different strengths and weaknesses. Like, we have three lawyers on, on the board, and, you know what I mean, so somebody's, you know...
Stop, we're all, we're all coming at these from a different angle, we all have very different experience.
Exactly, so, I mean, it's not going to be like a popularity contest or anything like that, it's just going to be like, who's really a good, who's interested at the right, you know, level engage, of engagement, and who's a good fit with, uh, with the board.
Yeah, so, so, so what I, what I did, the 90 seconds, each of us ask a single, the single question, um, and instead of trying to figure that out at the meeting, if we send them to her, she can, you know, give us what that, those questions are, and then turn it over to the select board for general questions, and I think the expectation, they'll work it out with, with Rob, is, isn't that they will all ask a question, it's just like, d- does the select board have any questions or comments? Um, and maybe there is only one or none or two or whatever, and then come back for, um, any general follow-ups, or I want to also think we should, if a candidate puts something very specific to them in their talent bank form, to be able to ask a question at that point about, you know, hey, it was very int- interesting that somebody has done this, and maybe there's a question about how that would apply here, or how, um, and then provide the candidate an opportunity to ask us questions, because, you know, the, uh, if, if it was me on the other side, I'd be as much interviewing them as, as they are me, um, and then just give them like a 30-second wrap-up of their, you know, their, their thoughts at the end. And if I did quick math on that, I, I think that probably keeps us in, in, in one to two hours timeframe for if we, if we're diligent with the time, but...
And anybody's welcome to reach out to me or any of, I, I don't want to volunteer you, but I think you'd be fine. You know, uh, reach out to us beforehand, if you have questions that are going to assist you with making your decision about whether you want to continue, um, with the process, or even just to connect with us and hear more about what it's like from all, our perspective, because we all have different... Paul's, I've been chair for 10 ye- 11 years, Paul just chaired the building committee, um, for several years, Tina's on AshPAC, I mean, we all have different, um, ways that we've contributed to the committee, so, um, if you want to hear more about any of that, I strongly encourage you to reach out to anybody. So I think that, I mean, if you guys will send me questions, I'll make a, a list of the top four that will get asked to every candidate, and so everyone should come prepared to do a 90-second opening, just of introducing, it's gonna be on WACA, um, and it's gonna be a public process, we're gonna have to somehow figure out how to make a decision, you know, in a public way, just like when we hired, you know, the superintendent, um...
So should we not require, but should we, you know, really ask them to come in person, um, as a preferred way? I mean, if somebody can't, they can't, but, and we, I don't, I don't think, I don't think they should be disqualified, but, you know, to, to say that's our preference for them to...
Yes, it is a hybrid meeting, all our meetings since COVID, since we were, were back, we've been hybrid, so there's the opportunity. Uh, and that, by the way, moving forward too, the, the preference is for all of us to be here, when we have, when we can't. Um, as in my case, I, there's a couple meetings I'll miss next month, and I will tune in, and other people have had to miss, and they've tuned in for, on Zoom, but the preference is if you can be here and present.
I think it's important to, to u- understand what our expectations are, as we've tried to come back in person, so...
Yeah, so that's, um, that's the job, uh, you guys will send me your questions, I'll ask Mark to do the same, um...
And then once you get feedback from the select board, will you kind of, and kind of figure out what the whole format will look like?
Yes.
Will you be sharing that with the people who filled out talent bank forms, even if it's just a, a rough overview, 90-second intro, questions from the school committee, questions from the select board?
Yeah, because on everybody's talent bank, I believe, um, they had to leave their email address. So I think what I would do is sometime before the meeting, I would write up a final, like, here's how it's gonna go, because there's a piece of it that I won't know till tomorrow, after Jim and I have our meeting.
And, and, and probably to get back to you that they're still interested to, to know... And, and probably to get back to you that they're still interested to, to know, so we have an idea of, if, if because, I mean, at the end of the day, if, if somebody's filled out and they're no longer interested, if they let you know, then we don't need to publicly say they didn't show up, right? And be thoughtful of that.
Absolutely. Right. Like your name won't go on the agenda or anything like that, I don't, I don't think. But it will be good for us to know who to anticipate being here so that we can pace, pace the evening. So I think we have a process. And I'll circle back with you all with just FYIs tomorrow after our meeting, or Jim will, to let you know the input from the select board. I mean, it is their decision too, so I do want them to feel like if they have to make a vote, they're, you know, gonna need to feel like they've, they've done their due diligence, so whatever that looks like. And then hopefully we're voting on a new member on January 24th. So. You guys, you good with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, it sounds good.
Yeah.
Just thanks everybody for their, their, their interest and
I know. We're thrilled to have the interest and
I got a feeling that's gonna be the most difficult meeting we've ever had, regardless of all the other
I know. I'm already stressed out. Because we have a lot of people with just a lot of great things to offer. And so, but my, my, hopefully, you know, we'll, we'll run a, a process that helps us get the right person. And, you know, and then if it's something that interests you and you weren't the person, then just keep watching for opportunities to, to be involved. So.
Cool.
All right, good. And then that does do some things to our meeting. There's, there is one thing I am going to keep in our agenda because I do have somebody from the Warren Site Council who had created a really wonderful, very brief though, presentation about communication. And it's presenting it in a way that we haven't discussed it before. And she had to get childcare and things like that. So she's planning on coming that night. It will be short. And the, the select board isn't coming till six thirty anyway. So we do have thirty minutes in the beginning. I'm gonna give at least probably fifteen to Caitlin.
Perfect.
But if there's something else you need to squeeze in.
Sure.
So we're not, we're gonna push some of our busy business, but Jim will, we'll talk more about that.
Can we dive into that?
Yeah, please. Thank you.
I want to extend an offer to any of those who've filled out the talent bank form to either reach out to myself or Michael too. If, if they have questions about, you know, our role and how we've worked with the school committee. Again, it's, it's an exciting time to bring another person into the fold. I always look at these as great opportunities for our, our committee and to, to grow and get stronger. So it's, it's exciting. The last time we did this, going back to 2015, we, we actually had a, I found the agenda today. I went through all of the old agendas and tried to find it and, and was able to. And we booked three hours that night, just for, for the
And there were eight people.
I was just gonna say, do you remember how many people there were?
We had, I want to say three. It ended up being, yeah, so, but
Some people had, had more than three had contacted me with interest, but by the time we got to the date, people had changed their minds. But I mean, that's how, I mean, if you start the process, it's, it's gotta be a thoughtful process of, after you find out some things.
I can contact Adam and he can keep the clock and, and it's like, you know, meetings.
Sure. Prefer we don't do that.
I was just gonna say.
So just for an update, I, I think it's important, a couple of things. One, before I get into the next meeting, which is in February, the first meeting in February, because of the 24th being taken up due to filling the position. There are a number of, of major pieces that we need to discuss as a board. And you need to be involved in and, and waiting until the fifth member is part of this group seems appropriate. And one of those is the strategic plan. I think we're, Michael, we're ready?
Yeah.
It's time.
It's good.
We have, we have a new vision for almost a year now.
No, no, no. We, no, we, I think we
It's good to go.
We had a really good meeting with our, Mike and I with Prem a couple of weeks back. And then we brought the whole administrative team in together and finalized the plan. And so we want to finally share it and get your final input on that. But waiting until the, the, the February meeting is, is important. Then there's another component is the calendar survey that was sent to the community. Well over nine hundred responses to that survey. I am not going to tease out the information that, that I've sort of started to go through. But we have a presentation that will present that night as well. I do need to at some point get the calendar set for twenty four, twenty five. What I can tell the community is anticipate us going back to the starting pre-Labor Day. This year was an anomaly because of the Mindes School, right? And we, we started later partly because we needed the time to ensure the building was ready to be turned over to us.
And we front loaded PD too.
And correct. Right. So, but that being said, the calendar's important. But I know families are always wondering when the year's going to end versus, you know, when it's gonna start. It's going to start before Labor Day. That's, we're going back to that, that model. And we'll have that Wednesday, Thursday of the week before Labor Day. Friday's off because that's part of the teacher's contract. And then we start in earnest again after Labor Day. So those are two really important pieces that, that we need to discuss in February.
Will you be asking us to approve the calendar that night or just the presentation?
I think I'll just start with the presentation because I think you're going to want to have some good thoughtful dialogue. And I believe the last time I did a calendar survey, it was, we had tremendous community input as part of the school committee meeting. That being said, I think that is on February thirteenth. Is that?
I think it's the fourteenth.
You think it's?
The fourteenth.
Fourteenth? Valentine's Day?
I think it is.
Is that a Wednesday?
I think so.
So Mike and I will, will be remote because we're at, actually at a conference, but we're still going to present. The meeting is still going to happen with us, as we talked about hybrid, we'll be hybrid that day with those two pieces. But it's critically important we get those in front of the committee as soon as possible. So a couple of other things, we are starting negotiations tomorrow with our first bargaining unit, the teachers unit, starting tomorrow. And then the, the rest will follow, if you will. There are five units that will be bargaining this year. And so that's, that's starting. I sent out a memo yesterday to the community, just to remind them about inclement weather. Just, it's gonna happen at some point, maybe when I'm not around. There might be a snow day called someday. But, you know.
I think you got a lot of hopes up. Some kids saw that and were like, wait a minute.
Yeah. No, I, I actually had a couple of students emailing me, Mr. Adams, we're not, no, sorry, you're going to school today. I'm just trying to let you know that be prepared at some point.
Yeah.
Somebody might reach out to you and say, hey, the weather's not cohesive to have in school. So, but that being said, we do follow the pattern. And, and I want to be clear with the community, it's not a, you know, Jim Adams' decision strictly. Or me. I mean, when you, listen, you know, I'm from Vermont. I don't make those calls lightly. I take my time. But that being said, there's a tremendous amount of collaboration that exists with our facilities and maintenance crews, with Chris, with John Murray, with the DPW, with Doug Small, Roy Carrera, Chief of Police, Donna Walsh, who's in charge of the busing for Connolly Busing. All of these individuals, even this morning at 5:00 AM, we were texting. And I'm driving around looking at the ponding that exists from the rain at 5:30. But that's the conversation. So it's not just a simple, a decision that one person makes. And we're having conversations with the twenty other superintendents within the Metro US communities. We, you know, we have to understand that we have four hundred plus employees and a lot of our employees don't live in Ashland. And they're coming from different areas as well. So we're trying to be mindful of, of making sure our staff is safe as well. So these are all things that people probably think is just a simple, hey, it's snowing, don't have school. You do that and we extend to June 27th and 28th. And then people are really unhappy with me. So coming back for a day here and a day there. So that's really all I have for the update. So.
Excellent.
All we have.
And you're not on here, Mike? So I guess
No, he's not this week.
Okay, cool.
Unless he wants to be.
You've been shut out.
No, I think when he was, when he had his surgery.
I'm officially back. So I've been back and I, I look forward to giving you update next meeting, I guess.
Excellent.
It's fine.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
I hope you're feeling good.
Feeling great.
Awesome. Paul, do you have awards?
I do. Between December fourteenth, twenty twenty three and January tenth, twenty twenty four, I, Paul Kendall, authorized by my signature, payables in the amount of one million, one hundred twenty six thousand, nine hundred and four dollars and eight cents. This includes general fund expenses of seven hundred, two thousand, seven hundred ninety nine dollars and fifty two cents, revolving expenses of four hundred and twenty dollars, four hundred twenty thousand, seven hundred sixty one dollars and fifty four cents, and grant expenses of three thousand, two hundred and seventy four dollars and eleven cents, and meals, tax expenses of sixty eight dollars and ninety one cents.
Thank you. Do we have minutes?
We did, yeah.
You did.
Just one set or?
Just one.
Okay, because the date's not here on the agenda.
It was December thirteenth.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have anything?
Nope.
Want to make a motion to accept the minutes?
Make a motion to accept the minutes from December thirteenth, twenty twenty three.
Second.
Or I move too, sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we have gifts and donations?
We do. So I've got a little list, so bear with me. A hundred dollars to the Helping Our Own Fund from Alison Cognetti, Cognetti. Bright Fund, two hundred dollars for gift and donations for EDP. Ashland PTO, two thousand, four hundred, three dollars for the grade seven field trip. Rebecca Williams, fifty dollars to Helping Our Own Fund. The Mead Family, one thousand dollars for Helping Our Own Fund. The Jetstrom Family, fifty dollars for Helping Our Own Fund. Planet Aid, two hundred seventy dollars, ninety cents for miscellaneous donation. Turncliff Family, one hundred dollars for Helping Our Own Fund. The McGuire Family, two thousand, five hundred dollars for Helping Our Own Fund. And Roberta and Juan Flores, fifty dollars for Helping Our Own Fund, for a total of six thousand, seven hundred, twenty three dollars and ninety cents.
Thank you for all those generous donations. We have a motion to accept them.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Member updates?
I have no idea.
Seems like it's been a while since we've been here.
Yeah, let me, let me look at my calendar.
Last meeting was virtual, so that probably makes it feel a bit longer.
Yep.
Um, let's see, what, what's happened? Yeah, I don't know. There's been, there's been things. We, we're actually having a, we're giving a tour to another district of Mindes tomorrow. And I know there's a bunch of other things, but I didn't, I've not gone back to my calendar to look, but, so.
Yeah, I have no update since our last meeting. Ash Pack, I believe, is next week, though I'm gonna have to double check with my calendar. And yeah.
Man, you observed a budget meeting?
Yeah. Oh, that's right. Yeah. So we had, thank you for reminding me of that. Lori and I had the opportunity to, to sit in and observe one of the administrative budget meetings. And it's always, I know, I've always known how much work goes into this before it comes to the school committee and how many different layers there are to it, but it was nice to be able to kind of, you know, see the process and see all of the, you know, the collective brain trust, if you will, of our administrators come together to identify the needs and figure out, you know, some of what we need. Obviously, this was only one of a million meetings that they all have together. But it was nice to be able to, to, to watch the process and hear their conversations. So thank you for including us in that.
Perfect. Thank you. And I don't have anything to add besides that. So I will take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone.
Have a good night.
Have a good night.